Jeff, can I?
He already is.
Do you want me to?
But the narrative in here we had.
Everybody's here tonight.
Good evening, everybody. We've got a full house. It usually looks like that, like this in here on a Tuesday evening for council. I call to order the Bethany City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017. Would you please rise for tonight's invocation and flag salute? Tonight's invocation will be given by Councilmember Paul Todd.
By your hands, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus, and we pray that you draw closer to all the victims and the families that are suffering so badly in Las Vegas. And we pray that your presence be very, very real to them. We pray tonight that you would help us have wisdom, knowledge, and give us direction, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, Mrs. Newn Swander is here, and her third grade class and their families. Thank all of you for coming. Ms. Newn Swander, how am I doing on your name in my?
Your nail line.
I'm good. Good. Just wanted to make sure once again. She's been teaching at Earl Harris Elementary in Bethany for 25 years. And now, we'd like to have the third graders lead us in the pledge.
You ready? The flag is in that direction. Attention.
Salute.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That was awesome. You may be seated. Item number one tonight is the Consent Docket A through F. Is he ready?
Oh, I've got one. I've got one.
I need two, though.
See you guys later. Item one is Consent Docket A through F. Do I have a discussion or motion for approval?
I move approval of Consent Docket 1, A through F.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Please cast your votes. Item two tonight are service award presentations. J.D.
Why is it when I walk down here, everybody scrams? I'm trying to figure out the math on that. This is a special night tonight. We have a number of service awards to present. And so, I think we'll do this in order from, where we'll end with the longest amount of service. So, first up with five years of service, Kyle Freeman. Is Kyle here? Okay. Appreciate Kyle. With 10 years of service, John Drew. Come on up, sir. Thank you. With 10 years of service, also with the police department, Robert Reed. So, we were supposed to pose, John, so maybe you ought to come back down for a moment.
Forty years. I'll break his camera. Thank you.
Next, with 15 years of service, also with the police department, Chad Meek. With 15 years of service and from the water plant and public works, Tom Seymour. Is Tom here this evening? Thank you, Tom. From the fire department with 20 years of service, John Card. And someone that seems to be around my office quite a bit. 20 years of service, Linda Warner. Linda?
She had his own name on the agenda, too.
That's right. She did. And then finally, last but a long way from least, the person responsible for so much that has activity that's been going on over the last year with 40 years of service, Paul Justice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, everybody. Item three tonight is adoption of Resolution Number 1471 approving to retain the services of Vannum Law Firm for legal services in furtherance of the sale of the telecommunications leases on city property. Do I have a discussion or motion for approval?
Is there a staff report?
Yeah, I'll give a brief staff report. About three months ago, I was contacted by a company that's an agent for AT&amp;T expressing an interest in buying our lease rights to AT&amp;T on our water tower. And that is a long-term lease that we have, provide where they installed antennas and other equipment at the water tower, both at 36th and Wilburne and 25th and Wilburne. Both have, all have water towers, antennas. The proposal sounded lucrative. They were offering in the neighborhood of $400,000 for that lease. However, they were reluctant to share the paperwork that would be involved. And after I reviewed the paperwork, it was obvious to me that I could not recommend that you enter into that agreement. It was not in the city's best interest. And at a seminar I went to many years ago in California, I heard a man speak about the telecommunications industry. At that time, one, the thing that he said at that time that meant the most to me was that there was a man in the audience that had a bag phone. Those of you who remember those, they were, you know, the size of a suitcase and weighed about 50 pounds. And the speaker looked at the audience and said, "Within our lifetime, we'll all see cell phones this size." And he pulls a calculator out of his pocket, you know, that large. That's been probably 20 something years ago. So, that just shows you how fast this technology changes. But the individual who made those comments is one of the foremost experts on telecommunications law. And his law firm is Vannum Law. They're in Michigan. But after I visited with him, he asked if we had any interest, maybe not only in dealing with the sale of our AT&amp;T lease, but the other four or five leases that we have with various companies as well, Sprint being one. There are several. And his proposal is that we provide him all of our leases and a summary of the payment schedule for those leases. And he says the way to make the most money out of selling these leases is to go out for bids, so to speak, and let several companies participate in the, in the buying process. He's done this, I don't remember how many times. He said maybe 75 times or something. And I would anticipate that, you know, we're talking maybe 3/4 of a million dollars in revenue out of this proposition. But as with anything, the devil is in the details. And that's where his firm would come in, in that after I saw the paperwork that was being proposed by the company that had contacted me, I realized that some of it was way over my head, and we need someone to protect the city's interests. So, if you're interested in pursuing this, it's my recommendation that we hire this expert and let him handle the telecommunications law part, and then the real estate part I'll, I'll do here in the municipal law part. But at any time, if you decide after, even after, even if we go out for bids, the bids come back in. If you don't like them, you reject them, and we've lost nothing. But in order to go out for bids, you need to have a proposed contract, lease, and easement to go along with it, so that they see what they're bidding on. And that's where the, that's where the rub comes, in that there are so many pitfalls in those documents that for me to deal with somebody who does nothing but telecommunications law for AT&amp;T or some of those companies, I just couldn't hold, hold a candle to their, their knowledge. But the Vannum Law Firm can, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell. He estimated his fee would be in the $15,000 range, which I think would be money well spent. So, I'll answer any questions. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
I have a question. So, let's say the bid comes in at $400,000, and he gets $15,000 for doing the negotiations. It's for 30 to 50 years, and this is a one-time payment?
That's correct. Right now, we're getting either monthly or annual payments on these leases. The lease that pays the most is the Verizon lease, and it pays about $32,000 a year. And what these companies do, they, they figure the current value of those lease payments paid out over that period of time, and that's how they arrive. If they offer, they make it. But if you've got three or four companies that are interested, and there are many companies that do this, you know, you would, I would assume, up the ante, and that's his recommendation, too.
So, they would be purchasing existing leases, or would they be adding additional communications?
They would be purchasing existing leases.
So, they're going to buy our existing leases at a wholesale value? So, we're a right?
At a.
For, for the next.
At a current, at a current cash value. In other words, it's a matter of whether you take the, let's take the AT&amp;T one. We could take that, I believe that has a term remaining of 25 years, as I recall. We could take that $32,000 a year for 25 years, put it in the bank, and not do anything. But this is an option to see how much money is out there to do that. One other thing I didn't mention, administratively, this is somewhat of a problem for the city, keeping track of all this, because we have different leases with different companies. Each one of them sends a check, not at the same time. Some of them come monthly, some of them come annually, and then never, they all, all come at the same time. They're all required to have insurance. We have to monitor that that's in place. It is, it takes a lot of time of the city clerk, and, and frankly, there hasn't been a, in the past, there hasn't been a lot of attention paid to some of the things. And that way, we don't have that burden anymore. Someone else has, has assumed that burden. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Something I like. If you go along with this and make one of these sort of deals, would this have?
An escalation clause in it, or would we be tied on today's dollars for the whole 40 years or 25?
You're selling all your rights for the 50-year term for X dollars.
So, if, so if things doubled in the next 25 years?
These leases that are existing do have escalation clauses in it. And of course, that adds to the value that they pay in cash because of the built-in escalation clauses. Every lease we have has a CPI index increase in it. But that's taken into account when they make an offer for the lease.
And this, this furniture speaking with would advise us as to, as to who had the most profitable venture to offer the city of Bethany.
Here's what he would do in a nutshell. After you approve this agreement, I will send him all of our leases, which are about that, stack about that tall. And he will go through those, and he will digest them. He'll write a request for proposals. And he has a group of companies that he's aware of that purchase these. I believe he said there's about a dozen that he notifies. And it sets a date for receipt of bids, and they would come here, and then he'll help us evaluate those bids. And you would award it just like you would any other, any other contract.
And we pay, we pay an upfront cost of $15,000.
Just like you would pay me to handle it, too.
Would you do it for $15,000?
I, I don't know how to do it. That's the whole point.
That's why, this is, this is a person that has great expertise.
That's correct.
In this, in this type of negotiation.
That's all they do.
And it's your opinion that the city of Bethany would be a, much farther ahead than, than to do it ourselves if we'd use this company?
Absolutely. Now, it's a policy decision whether you decide to do this or not. And like I say, after you get into it, if the money's not sufficient, you just say, "We don't want to sell them at all." But that's a politi, a policy decision whether you continue to receive the monthly or the annual payments, or you take it in a lump sum. And you'll make that decision down the road.
If I could add one more thing on this, the financial side of it. J.R., our chief financial officer isn't here this evening, but back when we were kind of first getting into this, and the, this number, this $400,000 came up, we asked J.R. to run a net present value on that versus what we would be receiving on a monthly basis. And we would come out way ahead at just $400,000. And then we got into, as David was talking about a moment ago, the, the complexity of, of these types of agreements. And we, as, as David mentioned, there's a strong possibility that we may be way north of $400,000. So, it's even a better, better stance for us to take than.
That's a, that's a known price for just one lease, the 400 plus.
So, there's a potential these companies are offering to pay more in lump sum than what they would pay out monthly over the course of the next 25 years?
That's right. They, they have. They have actuaries who, you know, value the present value of these leases. And then they also look at the idea that during that 50 years, they may be renewing these leases with these people and, you know, make more money at that. But that's the risk they take, not you, and.
So, our agreement with them is for 50 years to where some of these leases may expire in 10 years?
That's right.
And then they're going to renew at current value?
That's right.
So?
If, if, if at all, you know?
The lease is negotiable, though.
But it's all negotiable with them?
In other words, if this, if everything went to satellite, and everybody removed all of their towers from the city of Bethany, we would still have the $400,000 or more sitting in our bank account?
Yes, sir.
That's kind of the theory. You take the risk out of, out of them canceling leases. And we did have Sprint cancel a lease on our South Water Tower last year.
The 25th Street and Wilburn Drive?
Yes. Sprint said that didn't fit their program anymore, so they, and they had a right to cancel at that point in time, and they did.
What will, what will this do with the tow, with the, with the antennas that are on top of the tower building and those other buildings?
Those are private property. We don't have any interest in those.
I understand that.
It'll have no effect on them at all. Now, they could, they may be thinking about doing the same thing. I don't know. But they would get the money, not you, because those are on private property. See, our, our wording says that.
Yes, I.
That a person, that a company coming in to locate a tower in Bethany, the first option has to be to locate on public facilities, so we'll get the revenue off of it. Only if they can't locate it on public facilities because of location or height or otherwise, can they go to private property like they did over here at the bank building and down at the tower, and those are the only ones I recall.
I, I understand. My wording is bad, but this is one way that this can be weaseled out of also. I mean, if, if somebody, if Sprint or somebody wants to move to a private building, they could, they could move to a private building or whoever they are, and we would cease to receive any of their funds. So, we're better off taking this deal upfront as far, as much of it as we can.
Well, David hit it right, though, saying the devil's in the details. It depends on if it's a premium or a discount. You've got to see the numbers.
It's going to be a discount.
I would imagine it's a discount, because there's no interest rate to deal with, so.
My concern.
When J.R. figured it, that the number they offered was not a discounted figure. It was, I believe, $100,000 over what the present cash value was, is that right?
There was a big difference.
Mr. Palm, you have a question?
That was.
I just want to make sure that we're clear. This is a flat fee of $15,000, correct?
It was an estimated fee.
So, that's an estimated budget of what it's going to take for him to organize all the.
And to prepare the request for qualifications and review the bids when they come in, make a recommendation to you on who to award the bid to. And then he draws up all the final documents, and then I do the real estate and the closing part of the transaction.
Well, and because of his expertise, he'll be able to justify his hourly fee based upon the benefit that the city of Bethany receives.
Absolutely.
And that's why we're hiring him, right?
Yeah, he, he's expensive, but in my opinion, he's the best. He's done these all over the nation.
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1471.
My concern, my concern is, though, right now, our budget and our revenue is, is dead on with each other. We have no extra spending room in our budget year to year for improvements. Most of our improvements are coming out of savings. And so, by selling all of these lease lump sums upfront, we're losing that, we're borrowing from the future. When, when we say this is $100,000 more of that one example, the devil's in the details, you're saying, but that's because it's a short, the, the remaining lease is only for 15 years, and they're banking on renewing that lease for a much higher price. So, I don't think we're, we're taking this, we're saying it's more. That's not necessarily true, because we don't, they're, they're anticipating the lease go up, I would imagine, in 15 years, because they have a 50-year lease on it. We only have a 15-year lease remaining. They're imagining that payment's going up. That's why they're offering more than the remainder of that lease. So, in fact, that almost tells me that we're leasing for two less if, if other companies are coming in.
John, you're, if I may, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're assuming that the technology will be what it is now 50 years from now?
Well, these people are assuming that, too, because these people are banking their personal money on it.
Well, they want the benefit now, and they'll pay a premium price.
But this is a middle company that bids out and just buys leases for financial gain.
True.
So, they're banking on the technology being there, too. This is, this is private money. These are private firms, so they think there's a financial gain there.
I think the primary investors are investment bankers. I mean, who they are.
But we want to approve, you want to approve this without knowing if we're selling at a discount or premium, correct?
We don't know that until the.
Well, we're going to, because they're going to make a profit also.
But how could we approve this without knowing what we're selling at?
All we're approving is hiring an expert to get the best deal.
Right.
So, we're not, we're not making an estimate, we're not.
We're moving forward to.
We're approving to retain the services of a law firm. That means money.
Well, we're paying $15,000, which would be a budgeted amount for his review to provide an assessment related to whether or not this is something we want to do. And if it is, then we can debate those issues at that particular time.
But as a policy, do we want to move forward? Moving forward on this, we are borrowing from the future. This is a way to take out a loan.
All we're doing is hiring a law firm to assess what we have.
This is a $15,000 crap shoot, right?
No, I think the attorney will justify his fee based upon his expertise to give us the best deal.
We're rolling the dice, so.
I disagree.
I have a question. I'm, I'm a little confused about one something here. If we have multiple leases currently, and you've already established that Verizon pays $32,000 a year, and that $32,000 times 50 years comes out to $1.6 million, and that's just for one lease?
No, their lease only has about 15 years remaining on it.
Well, you are assuming that they're not going to.
Well, we don't know that. I'm not assuming anything. The, the, the attorney told me that, and J.D. was on the phone, that kind of the rule of thumb to value these leases is 15 to 20 times annual revenue. So, that's what you're going to expect.
Discounted.
In every lease.
Discounted.
That's way discounted, yes.
Okay, if, even if it's got 15 years left, that comes out to $480,000 in 15 years, and we're talking about a 50-year thing.
Yeah, I think, though, when you, when you figure present value, you have to figure what that money could earn if you were, if you took that cash and invested it for 15 years, too. That's how you figure present value.
And we're being told.
It'd be the, it'd be the actual payments, plus the interest they would earn at interest rates for that period of time.
We're being told it's statistically zero, though, the interest we're getting.
Well, that's true. But we've got a lot of money invested in, and not a lot of interest, that's true. But I don't know how you change that.
We need to look at that, putting that out the window. There's plenty of banking facilities that would love to bet on.
Wouldn't that be part of the assessment provided by the law firm that we're going to hire?
Absolutely. He's going to tell you whether every one of them's a good deal or not a good deal. And neither he nor I are going to pressure you to go with the way or the, one way or the other. I mean, it just, I saw it as an opportunity. If you're not interested in it, I wouldn't hire the man. I mean, it's just that simple.
I don't think.
This was an example, the $400,000 figure that was in here, that was an example, right? All we're doing is hiring an attorney to find out, to find out where we stand. It might be worth 1.6 million, or so on and so forth, each one of those. But until we know that, that's why we're, this proposal is to hire an attorney to help us.
If we wanted to borrow against the future, we don't know, because we haven't made an assessment about what we have.
I think our yearly budget is too close and too tight to lose those revenues yearly.
And you can call what you want, it's a crap shoot. I mean, that is the bottom line.
It's a $15,000 investment.
That is a crap shoot.
That's all it is at this time.
I mean, this money is going to be subject to council control if you get it, and you certainly could restrict it to anything you wanted to restrict it to, capital improvements, you know, whatever kind of.
David, it's feasible. We could, let's say, for example, we have 10 agreements, and two of them, we would like to take a cash payment of X amount initially. And then eight of them, we would like $32,000 for the next 50 years to get 1.1 million. So, we can make an assessment as to each proposal and the viability as how it would affect our budget and our needs at that particular time. So, we can do a cost-benefit analysis, but this allows us to do it in a way that would benefit the city in every way possible.
But I have not sent Mr. Pesel the, any lease except the AT&amp;T, which we did have a offer of, I believe it was $435,000. And he's seen that lease, but he's not even seen any of the other leases, because he, he did quite a bit of work in just the proposal he gave us, and I didn't want to send him 500 pages of documents, expect him to review them before he was hired.
It's plausible that his fee might be less than $15,000.
That could be, but policy speaking, our budget, we're pulling out of savings for all of these projects. The money is not in our budget to lose that in. The money is not in our budget to lose that income in upcoming years, in the next foreseeable two to three years. Now, I hope everything is changing in Bethany, and our sales tax revenues are coming up. But in the next couple of years, I don't see that, that we can lose that income.
And, you know, you're probably right, but we need an assessment from an expert to tell us that. And that's why we have this on the agenda tonight.
You know, a, a kind of a a nearer to home example of what we're talking about would be that, let's say that, um, one of your kids came to you, John, and borrowed, um, fifty thousand dollars from you at four percent interest. And you needed some money, so you went to Jeff over there and said, how much would you pay me for this loan that I've got with my son in cash today, because I need the cash to buy me a motor home with? And, uh, he would make you some offer based on, he would figure into it the risk involved, the how, what the interest rate was like, whether he thought interest rates were going up or down. You know, all those things would come into play. So that's kind of a at-home example about, of the same thing we're talking about here.
It sounds just like what John's describing is actually, I mean, what you're describing is a factoring company. That's what it sounds exactly like to me. And I agree, it'd be nice to find out some more information about it, but we don't have enough information to just take fifteen thousand and just give it to somebody.
I think the, personally, I think the, um, not spending the fifteen thousand, this is just my opinion, not spending the fifteen thousand to find out the information, uh, is, in my opinion, playing to, to not lose rather than playing to win. I, I think fifteen thousand dollars to find out, if it came out to that, to find out, you know, what we're looking at and what our options are. Like Mr. Palmer said, we may take two or three of the deals, and the other ones know we're gonna keep these as they are. To me, that makes sense. Just, you know, if not, then we're, we're no further ahead.
My concern is that we would get an amount of money, a large amount of money, and go, wow, we've been doing, wanting to do some startup costs for some things, and we haven't had the money, and we would spend it. I don't see us putting it into CDs and taking the interest off every year to add back into the budget. I think it would provide funding for some startup costs, and I'm not sure this is the best way to do it. Just comment.
Don't sell the goose that lays the golden egg.
We, we don't even have the goose, so we can't get the golden egg. We need to find out if we have the goose.
This sounds like we're talking about apples and oranges. So do we hire an attorney to help us make this evaluation, or, or do we just not do that? That's, that's where we are. That's what this proposal is about. It's not about selling the leases.
Well, it, it's moving in that direction.
Maybe and maybe not.
Well, it is. I mean, we would only hire.
Yes, but if it's moving in that direction, we want all the information we could possibly have on hand to make sure that we make the proper decision when the time comes to do it.
And ultimately, when the spending is, is the council's policy decision as well, so if you get extra money in, in one fell swoop versus getting it over, annualized over a number of years, it's still up to you all how you, how you spend it.
Do I have a, uh? Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Whose second is it?
Mr. Shire did. Please cast your votes.
This, this doesn't mean we can't still look into this. We're just not gonna pay somebody fifteen grand to give us their opinion, is all.
All I can tell you is I don't have the expertise to do that.
We give it to the college is what we ought to do.
I don't think there's a lawyer in Oklahoma that has the expertise to effectively protect you in this kind of transaction.
Item four, let's get connected. This was tabled at the last council meeting. A is approval of ordinance number nineteen forty-two, amending the Bethany Code of Ordinance pertaining to the installation of sidewalks, one. Go with ordinance number nineteen forty-two on reading by title only.
Mr. Mayor, may I offer a couple of comments? So, uh, this was, as you recall, was discussed at the last meeting. We were asked at that meeting to, uh, to have a task force to get together and, and to discuss sidewalks, particularly as they, uh, are affected in Ward Two. The task force did meet, and it was the opinion of the task force that we have yet some more work to do before this where it was to be brought back to the council. Uh, and so that's why it was originally in the packet. And then, uh, we did have, um, a council member shared with me typically, it's tradition that if it's tabled and it has to be brought back, we go ahead and bring it back, and then we ask for it to be tabled again. So it's, we're not ready to make recommendations on action on it, and so we're recommending that it be tabled again to a date uncertain.
Actually, I believe this was a public hearing item that was advertised, uh, in the newspaper. We probably should table it to a specific date.
Even the public, public hearing wasn't tabled.
I believe it was, wasn't it? Did we conduct a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there any reason that this, uh, that if somebody wants to put in a sidewalk right now other than in Ward Two, that they
Well, we had brought it up because.
Can't come to a.
We were, a few of us were discussing, and we're kind of confused about what exactly is going on, so we won't discuss it tonight, so we had to put it on the agenda.
So basically, Ward Two, which is my ward, but, so Ward Two had a meeting.
We had a, we had a meeting, and one of the things that was discussed was having a joint meeting with council and P and Z to come up with a master plan of sidewalks. This, let's get connected, actually having a plan of where the sidewalks will go, possibly even a phase one, two, and three, what's most important, let's get it done, what's the next phase, and that kind of thing. And then coming back and looking at whether or not we're passing this, this ordinance after we have some idea as to what is the game plan.
So we also can't, we can't approve the resolution for the sidewalk permit fee and the minimum or the revised standard requirements until we have a full-blown city sidewalk plan?
I might caution you on that resolution. That does adopt the ADA standards, which affects the width of the sidewalks.
And that was an issue at the task force meeting, in that, um, the ordinance, as provided, was inconsistent with the plan, which has really not been fully vetted and discussed. So before we pass the ordinance, the discussion was we should have a plan of phase one, phase two, phase three, so that if and when a resident wants to put a sidewalk in Ward Two or wherever, we have a specific guideline which would be, uh, consistent with development in the neighborhood. And that would be also consistent with other areas of the city, depending upon the need and the demand for sidewalks. So it, it was kind of a cart before the horse scenario, so we wanted to determine the plan before the ordinance changed.
Would we, would we deny someone the right to put a sidewalk in front of their house if it wasn't sequenced on our plan?
Well, as it is right now, the current ordinance would be in play, but the timing of the meeting, and I think that will take care of itself, in that, once we get the meeting and the joint meeting with all of the council and P and Z, we can resolve this in a timely manner. So, uh, the fact that most people, I don't think there's been one permit where somebody's come in and said, hey, I wanna put in a sidewalk. So we just wanna make sure we have a consistent plan, and then we can go about, amending the ordinances, or for that matter, calling IBTS, or whoever wants to participate, to make sure we have a consistent sidewalk ordinance for residents and businesses.
Mr. President. I think we need to have this joint meeting before this comes back up for a vote.
Agreed.
So we need that scheduled.
It does, it, we don't know what date we're gonna come back with.
Correct. My suggestion would be to have the task force meet, have the joint meeting, and one of the, um, requirements would be to determine when this could be addressed with the city council at a future date. And they would make a recommendation to the city manager to put it on an agenda item, date certain.
I heard Mr. Cox say this, uh, put this, uh, continue as the item. Does, does that require a motion?
Yes, sir.
Let's discuss it first, though. Good. Actually, the item, and KP, he and I were talking to some citizens away. I couldn't answer their questions anyways, and I had some confusion. We're about halfway through the fiscal year, and we, we budgeted three hundred thousand per sidewalk this year. Is that correct? Three fifty? And we're halfway through the year. And every day, I guess, almost every day, we're pouring sidewalks. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we're, did the council approve those?
Those sidewalks are the small areas that are being done in-house.
Okay, so we got three hundred and fifty thousand. We spent forty-two thousand on outside labor last month.
Well, that was augmenting, I, I believe I answered that question earlier. That was, that was, uh, uh, outsourcing that we utilized. Uh, they did help with sidewalks, but they also helped in other departments too.
So if you had forty-two thousand in, in labor, I'm guessing you had the same in roughly materials?
I don't believe that's the case. I believe JR told me today that we were about eight thousand dollars in materials that we've spent.
Eight thousand in materials? Okay.
So the, I think the idea is that the.
True with the normal of about, uh, twenty percent material and eight percent labor on laying concrete.
And the idea is that the big stretches of sidewalks, that were, that, that probably we need to contemplate council, Rockwell, Thirty-Sixth Street, all the other big stretches that are really gonna be impactful, that those probably will need to be contracted out. It, it just, it would be time, too time-intensive for, I think, our staff to be able to accomplish those, and then their other duties.
Well, that, that's my problem is this, is we got, we're, we're spending fifty thousand a month on sidewalks without a plan. We're gonna be out of money before we come up with a plan.
I don't think that's correct. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you, you give me the number. That's just what I just roughed through together, is fifty, I thought it was actually seventy-five thousand.
I'd be happy to do a little report back to you all if you'd like, but that, that was, I believe that's all of Public Works, uh, the outsourcing that we, we were utilizing.
Okay. Well, how much, well, you don't, so we don't know how much of that is our concrete, guys are pouring concrete. We're taking guys off, something else to put on concrete.
Yeah, no, I can, I can see if I can get a report together for you, though.
Well, I think we need to stop pouring sidewalks till we get a plan together. That's the question. That's my concern is.
I, I think what, what we have been doing is, is the little, small connecting areas. So there's a sidewalk, there's a thirty-foot gap, for example. We, we fill the gap. There, we did the, the sidewalk that's here at City Hall. It's a small area. We didn't have to go out for a bid for, for having a, an outside source to contract with. So we're just trying to do the smaller.
I counted, I counted about ten of those. So you, are you, are you breaking them into seven, less than your spending limit to pay for those? So you don't exceed your cap?
All of them would be.
So you could.
So there, there'd be kind, kind of like operations, though. I mean, you don't, you don't do that as far as running the water plant and producing water.
I understand that, but we're gonna be out of money for sidewalks before we even come up with a plan where to put them.
We're a long way away from that. I can, I can provide a little report for you on the sidewalks, but we're a long.
Well, I, I think we need to stop pouring sidewalks till we come up with a plan.
Well, I will give you a plan, but, but you're talking about, we were going at eight million dollars for a library, and we didn't have a plan for it. So, you know, hey, there we go.
We have, we have plans, but to, to continue to pour sidewalks at this rate.
We didn't have a plan. We didn't have something we could look at. We got a dream, and this is a dream.
Okay, so we're gonna be out of money by the time we come up with a plan where to put them?
Uh, he said he'll get you a report, so we'll just wait for his report.
Okay, that just seems ridiculous.
So on this, item number four, we wanna table this again, but it's indefinite until we get the joint meeting, correct?
Can we do it indefinite, postpone?
Yeah, just motion to postpone, correct, David?
Does this have any effect on the six-month rule? Something is not taking.
No, you've not taken action on it, so if you haven't taken action, uh, you can bring it back up anytime you want to. Doesn't apply unless you took action. If you denied this ordinance, you'd have to wait six months to bring it back.
I'd, I'd make a suggestion. Maybe we could have a, uh, status conference, as they say in the business, uh, six months from now, related to the, uh, three months from now, a report from the task force to the city council related to the ordinance. Uh, and then we can set a definite deadline, and it doesn't fall through the cracks, and we have a deadline. Was that feasible?
We're happy to do whatever you all would like to do. I, I guess, let's kind of back up just for one second, though. You know, when, when, um, when we started this process, actually even before I got here, the community went through a, a, an enormous process to, to come up with the comprehensive plan and to build sidewalks, multiple places in, in the comprehensive plan. And I kind of took that as, as my charge when I came here, go forth, do the comp plan, and so that's what we've been doing. And we've been doing sidewalks in those areas that are, they're not harm, harmful at all. In fact, there's lots of things to be done. The whole dream behind the, let's get connected, was to begin the process and to begin brainstorming, to give a, a jumping off point. So we're, I think we're in, we're in good shape, and I would suggest, let's not just stop because we don't have all the answers to all the questions. There's no reason for us to stop building these small connections and let people start walking in our community in some of these areas and connecting some of the areas. In the meantime, uh, the, uh, we can, we can move forward with doing the, the, not only the joint task force, but also coming up with the, uh, with the ideas on, on how we can best accommodate, like the different size sidewalks that, that, like you were talking about, Mr. Palmer, in, in Ward Two, where, where they are a different size. But we can, we can be doing multiple things at the same time. We don't have to put the whole program to a grinding halt while we wait six months to figure everything out. I think we keep, keep building, unless, a majority of you tell us otherwise, we'll, we'll keep doing what we've been doing, and, and in the meantime, this task force can go ahead and meet, and we'll have a joint planning and zoning board of adjustment, and you all, uh, and we'll, we'll figure out the answers to the rest of this. And that was the idea. One more quick, quick time, uh, was that we needed a jumping off point to begin dialogue, so we're beginning dialogue, and also getting, we'll get some community feedback along the way as well.
Aren't we also building the sidewalks that we got the grant to build?
That is correct, yes, on Twenty-Percet Street and Rockwell.
And that's in addition to what we set aside?
That is correct.
So those should go ahead. I mean, that's the bulk of Rockwell and council and some of those major streets, so they shouldn't be held up just because we're trying to decide who's sidewalks.
Has that been awarded, that, that grant?
The, um, so been awarded. So ODOT has awarded us, and they are, they are working on the, on the whole project as doing design. I, I think they might be like eighty-five, ninety percent through with, with design now. So we haven't gone out for bid for, for contractors yet.
But we've got the award for the, for the.
I'm sorry?
We've got the award. We're gonna receive the money.
Yes, sir.
For that, okay. How much is that?
I'll have to.
Roughly?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Is it more than three hundred thousand or less than three hundred thousand?
I believe it's more. I'll have to find it out.
That needs to go forward. That's an important project.
I think six months is a little bit too long to make sausage. I think we should move ahead of this as quickly as possible.
What timeframe do you think is feasible?
Well, I think, I think with any, well, we, we're, we're in probably a down period. We're gonna be having weather that's not permissible to do concrete work. So I think we should probably have this ready to go within, uh, probably three months. And then we can, we can allow contracts to be left after that and allow them to go ahead, to go forward instead of, say, six months or a year. I think we should make a date certain so that we get moving on this. Because if you don't make a date certain, there's a, there's a lot of cogitation going on.
I think that's an excellent idea.
So we tabled this, we have a motion to table this for three months? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I think we should, no, I think, I think we should move.
No more than.
And, and even though we don't bring it back to us for three months, but we ought to have, and make, make. to have, and ma- make sure that it's ready to be brought back to us in three months-
Within three months.
So we can, so we can have some time before the weather really gets good in, in the months, the spring months, that we can do this.
Well, how long does it take to put together a joint meeting of P and Z and the council?
Obviously, less than three months.
I would think so.
Well, you, you would, you would think so, but I think we should, this may take longer to find out where we wanna do this and where we wanna do them, do the sidewalks. And since there's going to be different size sidewalks all over this, you know, they're not all gonna be six-foot sidewalks. There may be five-foot sidewalks, there may be four-foot sidewalks, there may be three-foot sidewalks that would get away with it.
But maybe kids aren't walking in the street anymore?
So do I have a motion to table this for no more than three months, so that we can have a joint meeting take place and a plan?
Come up, come up with a date, and I think that would be-
That's our mom.
Somewhere towards the last meeting of the calendar year. And what would date, would date, that would be somewhere around the nineteenth or eighteenth of, of December.
Be the eighteenth. So do I have a motion to table this until December eighteenth?
I'm, I'm kind of with Mr. Shirey. His original point, though, we need to hurry this up faster. If we wait that long, we're gonna have less dollars to spend on sidewalks that, that we, to go into a master plan. They're gonna continue to pour sidewalks, other works.
Do you, do you think if we spend it up and get it up to, let's say, November the seventeenth, then we can do it, you know, because then we gotta go out and contract them, and then the weather turns bad on us, we won't get it done before the weather gets good, because I know contractors, they don't like to go out and stand around life-threatening or below it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to table this until November seventeenth, twenty-seventeen.
Seventeenth is Friday.
So the, what's the next probable, uh-
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, okay.
November twenty-first. I make a motion to table this till November twenty-first, twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Just reading it right there. I assume that motion was for, um-
A and B.
Items A and B, is that correct? They both are related?
Yes. Item five tonight, is discussion and update concerning pending legal action and claims against the responsible parties concerning contamination of public water supply of the city of Bethany caused by contaminants migrating from the Oklahoma City Airport property. Can I read this other side?
I have a- I have proposed an executive session here because, in my opinion, to discuss this in public could impair our ability to defend this claim.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I agree with the need to have an executive session, but there are people here that might want to do the call to the public or whatever, and they would have to wait through this meeting. Can we move some of these items up and have the discussion at the end, since it doesn't have any reason to vote?
Doesn't vote me in.
That all, that all requires one moving at one, one-
He can do that, that road, he can do it.
Let's do the call to public. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Give us your name and address, please.
Melanie Kane, forty-four oh six North Central. Actually, I have two questions, I don't know if I've had time to ask both, but are two subjects. On the traffic study, is that only related to the one-way street issues, or are they looking at other traffic issues? And could you tell me what city agencies or other entities are giving input to the engineering firm? And are residents in the affected area being surveyed for their input? And if not, why not?
Fill in the blanks, but the, I believe that the traffic study is also addressing many of the no-parking issues on the adjoining streets, correct?
And who are they, who are they surveying for that? Who are they talking to?
Who are they?
Who was, the engineering firm?
That would be Lee Engineering.
And who are they getting their information from?
Well, they've been doing, um, observation of traffic flow and things of that nature, and looking at the, you know, there's a lot of people that park on all the other streets, Wheeler and Forty-Second through Forty-S sixth, as well as Central.
So they're not talking to residents in the area?
I do not know if they have done that yet, or if that is a part of the program.
Okay. And my other question, if I have time, is like, if, when, this is just for my information, when a business, say a church or a school, presents a plan for expansion to the Planning Commission and/or the City Council, or do these plans also require that they show adequate parking spaces that are also to be built to handle the additional traffic and parking needs that this will entail? And who ultimately, ultimately approves this part of the plan to show that there are realistic spaces being provided?
Sorry, I was in a conversation.
Did that, did that make sense, my question?
I think part of the answer, the ordinance is determine how many parking spaces various uses have to have. And each time the school comes in for an improvement of some sort, they're required to meet the number of spaces that the ordinance requires. Now, whether that's adequate to keep people from parking on the streets or not, I, I can't address that, but the ordinances do speak to that number.
Okay.
For instance, if you have a church, you have to have, I believe, uh, one parking spaces for every two seats, I believe, four seats. And schools, I don't remember what it is, but it's something similar to that.
Okay. And there's somebody that sees that that's done, or that that's, that that's accurate?
Be the Community Development Department, and most of the time, the Planning Commission and the City Council looks at that as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, back to our executive session item. I'd already read it, so do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I so moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. An executive session. But I authorize the city manager to make a request for qualifications from firms to study the water loss and leakage. Item six is city attorney's report.
All my items are listed on the agenda.
Item seven, city manager's report.
My report is very brief tonight, is just an update on code enforcement. As of this past week, we now have one thousand twenty-two total NOVs that have been issued. Two hundred forty-three are from Ward One, three sixty-one from Ward Two, two hundred twenty-three from Ward Three, and one ninety-five from Ward Four. Of those, one hundred and five remain open, nine hundred and eighteen are closed, and five are in abatement. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Fantastic. Item eight, council members' announcements, comments, and proposals. Tonight, let's start down at Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say congratulations and thank you to all the employees that received years of service awards tonight. A lot of years if you add all those up. And just for your daily service, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Shirey?
Yes, sir. I think our hearts ought to go out to the people in Las Vegas. They were there, uh, they were not there to cause the trouble that they had. And this country is getting to be so uncivil toward our populace that I think we need to get very tough. And this can start right here, 'cause, you know, if we want something cleaned up, we should clean it up, and it's our responsibility to clean it up. We also have a large number, or a lot of problems in our streets. Our streets are very narrow. We say we got twenty-six-foot streets, and they're, they're less than twenty-five feet when you consider them. You park two vehicles on both sides of the street, and you really impair our fire department and our, and our, and our, our, uh, emergency service people to be able to perform their function as quickly as possible. And I would like to see this council put together some sort of parking regulations on, on streets that are substandard to allow the, the movement of emergency vehicles up and down them. I would like also that we, we start looking at, at trees that hang over into these streets that, that have a real problem on catching, catching vehicles that run down through there. I know, I'm six foot tall, and I, you know, on, on my street, I can walk down and touch at least a half a dozen trees that are hanging out over the street, and I'm not, I mean, not up against the curb, I'm talking about halfway out into the street, and I can reach them. And we run, we run a, a refuge collection truck down them, and those are very expensive vehicles, and they're, they're, the hydraulic systems on them are taking a beating because of these tree limbs that are hitting them. And I think, I would, I would like to direct the city manager to start a program to take a look at that. And I think we ought to also pray for those people in Las Vegas. They are, they are innocent victims of our incivility towards each other in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCutcheon?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Moore?
Just a couple of things. I want to say thank you and congratulate the, uh, the employees for their, uh, longevity as an employer. It's the hardest thing in the world to keep turnover down to a minimum, and Bethany seems to do a very good job of keeping employees happy and around. Mrs. Holloway, past, um, council member Holloway, asked me if, if, if I remember a traffic plan. I said, no, that was before my, my time. And I didn't know if, Mr. City Manager, if you knew that there was a traffic study done about a stop sign and, and all the stuff we're looking at that was already done, did you get a chance to look at that? Or were you aware of that?
Uh, what, what year was it?
Oh, five, I believe.
Two thousand and five. I'll look it up.
Oh, five or oh-nine? I didn't, so you're not aware of the, of the traffic study? You're not aware of a prior traffic study?
No, sir.
Okay. We need to look into that and look at that and see what, what that, I think she's got a copy of it, I'm sure. She gives copies of everything. Thirty-second and Holloway is a problem in, in our ward. I think it's, it's a problem for, I guess, maybe it's about the city's problem, but we've tried, I guess, over the, I know of ten years to try and do something about that, roughly that corner right there. There is a, looks to like a haunted house, if you've ever seen it. Cobwebs everywhere, there are hirsks decorated with bodies hanging out of it and things like that.
Hey, I don't think you're talking about Thirty-Sixth and Holloway.
No, Thirty-second, I think.
Thirty-second Holloway, no?
Thirty-second.
Is it Holloway?
Hammond, Lake Hammond.
Hammond, now, you, Holloway's in my ward, Hammond's in your ward.
That's right. I was thinking about Caddy.
And I don't like the information there that you're putting forward.
Well, we can, we can talk about your-
'Cause I try to keep my place clean.
We can talk about, you know, the, the townhouse behind your place over there in a minute. But at Thirty-second and, and Hammond, I guess it's infiltrated now. I've got phone calls to the street. So if we couldn't do anything before, since it's behind the front fence, as far as the, the, the treasures that are piled up, I guess, is, is we haven't done anything about it for ten years. But evidently, it's now from the, from the house to the street. So if we'd sent somebody over there possibly to, to talk to them, I know that the code enforcement has said in the past they don't like going there because they get chased off. But if they need to take a policeman or something with them, please take a policeman if that's the reason they're not going there. But we've got to do something about that. It is ridiculous. The, the, the roof is, is decorated. The roof is decorated. It's just, it's out there. So please look into that. That's all I've got.
Mr. Todd?
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Harris?
I just want to reiterate what Councilman Shirey said about the no-parking on one side. I've had complaints about that, and I think it's, we need to have somebody just kind of drive the streets and see which ones are too narrow for passing, because once cars are on both sides, you can't get a vehicle through the middle.
Mr. Palmer?
I'd reiterate that Ward Two, specifically Central, uh, in Ward Two is parking on both sides. I think if it was on one side like it is on College, I think you would have a better way to allow emergency vehicles to get in and out of the area. It's just one thing that has not been taken care of, that I think could be taken care of at a minimal cost to the residents and provide a better environment, especially around time to school and, you know, dropping off and picking up and parking and everything like that. So the second thing I'd like to mention is that the U.S. Department of Education has determined that Earl Harris Elementary is a national blue-ribbon school, and I would like to congratulate the faculty and the principals and the Bethany Public Schools system. The fact of the matter is that school dictates the value of my home, and I admit that freely. So we should do whatever we can to encourage and to allow them to succeed. And if we forget that, that, that's our problem, because they're doing exactly what they should do, and they're doing a great job. So congratulations, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd just like to mention that we are currently in the midst of making some media upgrades here in the council chambers so that we can move into this century on our Cox Channel Twenty. For those that have Cox cable still and watch the council meetings, it'll be more of a high-def quality. Also, I'm interested in hearing people's opinions on whether or not maybe we Facebook live the council meetings, because, like I said, not everybody has Cox cable, and you might be traveling to Timbuktu someday and just be interested in what's going on here, and you could look at Facebook and watch it. So those, uh, those things are happening. Item nine is new business. Do we have any new business tonight? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. With that, I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is the consent docket, approval of minutes and approval of claims. Do I have a discussion or a motion for approval?
So I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is a ratification of city council approval of resolution number fourteen seventy-one, approving to retain the services of Varnum Law Firm for legal services in furtherance of the sale of the telecommunication leases on city properties.
And there's no reason to take any action on that since you didn't approve the resolution?
Item three is new business. Do we have any new business? Item, no new business, I declare us adjourned until October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item one, A and B, it's a consent docket, approval of minutes, approval of claims. Do I have a motion?
So I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two, new business. Is there any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. I call to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item one is a consent docket, approval of minutes and approval of claims, A and B. Do I have a motion for approval?
So I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Bodies adjourned. I would like to recall item three upon the Bethany City Council. For reconsideration.
Can we do that if I've already adjourned?
Actually, did you, since you adjourned the council meeting?
Is that, when adjourned the council meeting, does that mean it's all over? Or does it mean-
You could re, have a motion to reconsider the motion to adjourn. I got a second for-
I got a second for that, then you could reconsider item three.
Well, I will make that reconsider.
Re.
Adjournment of the city council meeting. For October seventh, seventeen. October the third, BDA.
Do I have a second to reconsider the adjournment of the city council meeting?
The BDA meeting is still going on.
So?
Okay.
I'm going with Mr. Davis here. He said he could make the motion.
Okay.
Did he not? That's what our city attorney just said.
Has to have a second, however.
Is my motion in order?
Yeah, it says motion in order.
To reconsider the motion to adjourn, yes, I think.
Consider the motion to adjourn, yes.
But Mr. Davis, our city attorney, said that it was all in order.
He's completely within his authority to whatever he wants to do.
I have, I have, I've had those called back until we walk out the front door. As a matter of fact, I had one wherever everybody was up and walking out the front door, I recall. Now, that may be a different set of rules, but, but we don't have any rules.
So we're within our.
I believe so, but if you don't have a second, it's dead anyway.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second, please cast your votes for reconsidering the adjournment of the council meeting.
Yeah, that motion passed, so the council's back in session.
You don't have to vote. You don't, you don't have to.
How much you want?
You don't have to.
I voted, though.
You don't, you don't have to, though.
Oh, I know. But I've voted every single time.
No, he doesn't have to, I just wanted to make sure he knew that, he does not have to vote.
I'm all for let your yes be yes and your no be no, that abstaining thing is confusing to me.
Now, a motion would be in order to reconsider item three.
I would like to reconsider item three of the Bethany City Council meeting, October the third, twenty seventeen.
Do I have a motion? I mean, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Please cast your votes.
So it's now up for reconsideration. To take any action would be a totally separate motion now.
Okay, I make, I make that motion, that we reconsider this.
Actually, it'd be to approve resolution fourteen seventy-one.
Resolution, please. Resolution.
Fourteen seventy-one. And again, this is, like we'd mentioned before, an investment to see if this is worth moving forward in, or are we satisfied with not knowing what is out there and available for us?
I'm sorry, you said investment?
Would be an investment, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one way of putting it, I mean, it'd be an investment.
Mr. Mayor, I would second that motion made by Councilmember Shirey.
Okay, please cast your votes. For the adoption of resolution number fourteen seventy-one.
Failed a second time.
That is classic. Now I gotta find where in the world I was.
Where was he, Susan?
Item two, item two on the Bethany. Now I have to declare us adjourned again?
Where were you?
We need to vote to adjourn.
I, we never do, we never have done that.
We declared adjourned, yeah.
Had he, had he called BDA order? But no consent agenda yet? Okay, that, next, fine, next would be item two on the.
Okay.
Development Authority agenda.
I declare us adjourned, the Bethany City Council meeting until October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Back to item number two, approval of resolution number fourteen seventy-six of the Bethany Development Authority granting a water line and public utility easement to the city of Oklahoma City near Overholtzer Drive and Old Route sixty-six highway, abutting the proposed waterside development area. Do I have a motion for approval of resolution number fourteen seventy-six?
Do we have a staff report for this?
Yeah.
And then also an explanation for us newer ones, why this is Bethany Development Authority instead of the city of Bethany? I'm just curious on that.
I'll answer that, that property was purchased by the Bethany Development Authority from the Boynton family, and the Bethany Development Authority had it up for sale for quite a while, and ultimately sold it to a group called Tin Cal, which had big plans for development that never materialized. The, um, Tin Cal then platted the property for development, but deeded back the canal area to the city, or not to the city, to the Development Authority. So, what the Development Authority owns is basically the exterior surrounding that tract, which is largely a canal or a creek.
So when they put in utilities, anything along the road, all that easement, is it all Bethany Development Authority?
Can you refer to that map and see if you can answer his question, Steve?
Or just on the backside where the canal is? Yeah. It just seems odd, and I'm not questioning, it just seems odd that the Development Authority would have the street easement, not the city. And so I'm just asking.
Well, it's really not a street easement, it's just a part of the property.
Well, the easement along the street.
That's part of the, part of the canal.
Above the street.
The reason they did that is to keep the, the special flood hazard area, the mapped flood zone, wouldn't be part of the Tin Cal development. It was, that's, that was planted as a separate lot, so that it wouldn't affect any financing or anything like that regarding the flood plan.
But that street actually is in Oklahoma City, Overholtzer Drive, that goes along the.
Right.
West edge of that waterside property, that's an Oklahoma City street.
Is this to allow the city of Oklahoma City to sell that development utility, to supply the utilities?
No, it's to, we already have water service to the development, this is for a large main they're putting in.
Okay, so it won't be supplying lakeside with utilities?
I think they're going to put fire hydrants on it, which would be to our benefit. I think it's a thirty-six-inch water main.
It is, yes.
I just want to make sure that we're not.
Provide a tremendous amount of power.
Yeah, it's, it wouldn't be the first time someone in Bethany tapped a line in Oklahoma City, if they would go for it, sure, they could.
Do they, does Oklahoma?
Can we make it so they can't?
What?
If we can grant the easement, so they cannot supply the utilities to that property?
You, the, the, the city of Bethany has to grant permission for anyone to go outside, if, if you want to let Oklahoma City provide them service, you have to give them permission to do so.
And vice versa, too.
Yes, and vice versa. There's a standard agreement.
And the easement would not do that. If it gets there, you know, the water line right through there, let me tap on to it later if they wanted to.
Again, that would be up to the, to the city to give permission, if you didn't want to do it, you couldn't grant permission.
Tin Cal kept the gold mine and gave Bethany back to Shad.
I move approval of resolution number fourteen seventy-six of the Bethany Development Authority granting water line, et cetera.
I'll second that.
And you have, so does Oklahoma City already own the easement on the rest of that?
I'm not sure what you mean by easement, but if you.
Well, okay, so looking, it says owner Lake Overholtzer Church and Azurine, where they got that.
Yeah, that, that's actually on a right-of-way, that they.
That they currently have?
Yeah.
So they're only lacking this twenty-seven-foot piece?
Yes, according to their surveyor, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's the only part that the city of Bethany would have any control of.
I'd say the quid pro quo for this was the fire protection with the two water mains, our water, fire hydrants that we're going to get out of the project.
Please cast your votes. Item three, new business, do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, and with that, we are finally adjourned.